Wonderful.
Yeah.
Before we get started, I just wanted to let you guys know that we're gonna be dialing Tracy in. She's the CPAs and kind of the outage and the items I'll just get to be on the phone. And then I'm here for all you guys to hang out for a minute so I can give you some minutes. And um, we've got some good items.
Charles, are you ready?
Yes ma'am.
Chad?
Are we ready?
Yeah, let's ready.
You're being called. I want me to start it. I'm gonna work on it.
Oh, and he slipped in, I didn't see.
There you go.
Hi, Charles.
You're straight up one of them.
How are you?
Hey, Logan.
Hi. Hey, Logan, can you sign in, honey? Are you gonna, are you gonna stay for a meeting?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good.
Pass that around to somebody.
To um, Charles, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's a bill.
Do you wanna go to the bill?
A bill.
Charles first.
We're both gonna look at it.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay for a while.
We got that in there, so we gotta go and look at it.
And um, does that have the um, does that have my bits in it?
Yes, it does. Yeah, I have, brooch in there. It's called meeting order. At one oh one to him. Here's the part ready for roll call vote.
Roll call vote, I mean roll call um, roll call? Uh, Janet Cress.
Here.
Howard Haggard.
Here.
Diane Jordan, here. Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
We have a forum.
Like to recognize our guests, all the chairs aren't full, but maybe next time, we'll get them off hold. Recognizing guests, thank you.
You're welcome.
The OSB office for elected officials, Helen, do you have those opposed?
I sure do. You guys can sign up and then I'll notify some.
Okay, are you gonna use that signature on the kind of the upper right middle?
Yes, on the upper right and then I'll do the rest of the heads.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Upper right middle. Take a picture of it, we'll take it home and read it. Discussion nominate, did everybody get their sign?
Sorry, Ross.
Yes.
Discussion nomination and election of mayor. I'd like to nominate Diane Jordan for mayor.
Second, ma'am.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote for Diane Jordan as mayor of Ho Chi Town. Janet Cress.
Agreed.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Agree, if y'all will all help me.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
And Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, Diane.
Diane Jordan is our new mayor.
I promise we are gonna keep trying to do great things.
We are doing great things.
We are, we've done a lot, we've done a lot. Um, discussion consideration, possible action to approve the March sixteenth special board of trustee meeting minutes, which is the next item in your packet. I think I only had one small tiny typo. See if I can find it. Might have been a different one.
Yeah, the, the acclamations on the, the election one, the next one, am I correct with that?
So. I appreciate you emailing these in advance for us to get to look at them.
Yeah, if uh, if we weren't attending that, if we didn't attend the meeting, we don't.
Yeah, you don't vote, yeah.
You can have say.
I read the room, I've emailed and I've briefly read them today. I'll make a motion to approve these meetings on the sixteenth.
Howard's made a motion that we approve the special board of trustee meeting minutes for March sixteenth.
Second it.
And Chad second. And um, only those who attended that meeting can vote to approve them, so that would be um, Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
And we had Janet Cress and Todd McDaniel absent at that meeting, so uh, those meeting minutes are approved.
Okay, um, discussion consideration and possible action to approve the April fourth biennial election meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to read them, do we have any discussion? Corrections? Make a motion that we approve the minutes?
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote to approve the April fourth biennial election meeting minutes. Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Okay, the meeting minutes for the April fourth biennial election meeting are approved.
All of these are available for inspection, as are the voting results when we get them in our official file cabinet and all that. They're gonna be available for one year, I think, six months or one year, I can't remember. Okay, discussion consideration and possible action to approve the claims list. Um, the bills have started rolling in. So, Charles, do you wanna go over what you've got?
Yeah, I um, so I handed to you our net income detail uh, through the current date. As you can see, we've got twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars total in deposits, these were donations. Nothing really since the last report I've had. And then uh, the expenses at the bottom, we have the bills uh, totaling eleven eighty-nine eight. And those are all bills for publications for various resolutions that we had to publish and uh, some notices and ordinances. The second item attached is just a bank statement, that's our last bank statement that we got showing our total deposits of the twenty-six fifty. And then the uh, last two pages would be the invoices for the publications, the one for ten seventy-eighty-five. And those all, the reason I have two is, is the, the first five, I think, had Town of Ho Chi Town there, Diane Jordan. And the other one had this Town of Ho Chi Town, so they couldn't put them together. So anyway, they totaled that um, eleven eighty-nine eight. So that's, as far as I know, the total expenses that we have so far.
We have one more that came in today, but you probably wanna keep them out so that you're working in arrears, like everything in March would come up in April, everything, yeah.
So the one we just got, the one we just got is due for the.
This was a little small expense from last weekend's uh, our mayor trip to Diane to Durant.
Okay.
And uh, seventy-one thirty-seven. We'll get, we'll get.
I think there's one more from the Gazette, like I said, we'll, we'll get those for the next meeting, we don't wanna be doing that.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And make a motion that we approve the claims list.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote to approve the claims list, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries to approve the claims list.
Now, does that mean I can, we can go ahead and write a check?
Right.
Okay, so I've got, I've got a check here.
And once we get our ordinances in place, then we can set the rules as to, you know, check number zero zero one, that's a historic moment right there.
I'll sign that one as well.
It takes two signatures for anybody to spend money.
This is about total eleven eighty-nine for the two of you.
Yes, yes sir.
And we're only approving the claims today from the newspaper ads for legal notices, so.
And the, the, the checks that I'm using are just temporary checks, they're on blank stock, um, check paper. And I just printed it from QuickBooks. And it prints out, of course, the ADA number, account number, everything, that's all the banks have written, you know.
Very cool, can I borrow your print?
Yeah.
We may wanna move some of that to the consent agenda later on as we get a little more organized, so that people don't have to sit and wait for that. Okay, all right, so we paid our first bill.
Paid our first bill.
All right.
Over progress.
Feeling scary, yeah. Okay, item number eight on the agenda, discussion consideration and possible action to approve obtaining a quote to ensure the Town of Ho Chi Town's public buildings and property and any other insurable assets from the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Um, that's called OMAG, OMAG is a wonderful organization, they take care of most of the cities and towns in the state of Oklahoma. Vicky Patterson, city manager of Broken Bow, actually serves on their board of directors. And so it's a, it's a good organization and they have provided this quote already, I think it was a thousand dollars for an annual premium. And it's good for one year and it's based on your income, which of course, we had none when we requested the quote, so I talked to them about that. And it'll probably go up as, or finances go up as our assets increase. They, they'll do that at the, at the time when it's appropriate, so.
Do they, do they base their rates off of our yearly uh, audit, is it?
Right. And we can request a special audit, you know, our fiscal year would end June thirtieth. And if we need to, we can, you know, request a first quarter audit that would carry us, say, from November to March thirty-first. Just to give somebody something to work with, and should be a one pager.
Yeah, and then, and this is the same audit that we'll need to start applying for all of our.
Everything else that we gotta have, right. Charles, anything to add on that, you could audit soon?
Yeah, I think um, uh, there is a sort of an alternative procedure that we can use.
Okay.
And living on it, and it's for um, smaller towns with a smaller budget. And we can only use it probably for a while until the money starts coming in, but it's just agreed upon procedures.
Okay.
So um, I'll get some more information on that and we'll uh, put together one of those uh, procedural, remember we talked about that in the pen? Uh, and um, we'll put something together and have that. Right, very soon, okay. But I, I think we can use that and live beyond it.
Now, this is not like a protection, like an insurance for us individually, this is just for property and asset.
For the town.
Right, but it's not like a insurance to those trustees.
That would be more like the bond part, yeah. Of course, like I said, you know, we don't have a whole lot of assets right now that belong to us, but we need to go ahead and get insured so that when we do, we'll recover.
And that.
And that insurance will be, you know, assuming, would be based off of, once you start acquiring property.
Right, then it'll go up.
Yeah, so we don't know based, what we charge if you don't have any.
It's a thousand dollars a year.
Is it, okay, perfect, okay.
But this says to approve obt- uh, obtaining a quote, do we physically have a piece of paper?
No, this, we wanna make sure that we agree that that's where we wanna go with it. But I, I don't even know that there's another option besides OMAG, that's pretty much what they do.
Agree to get the quote right now.
Right.
Well, I make a motion that we receive the quote from OMAG.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Tom, Chad, okay, roll call vote to obtain the quote for insurance.
Okay, uh, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel. Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Okay, the um, motion carries to obtain a quote for, from OMAG for ensuring Ho Chi Town's buildings, properties, and other insurable assets.
OMAG also has several conferences, you guys may wanna get on their mailing list about, you know, municipal business. Okay, item number nine on the agenda, discussion consideration and possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash three, authorizing the payment of the regular periodic utility bills pursuant to Title sixty-two O S, section three oh five dash one. Again, that's real similar to having a blanket agreement for claims under a certain amount to go ahead and be approved. And since we're not setting those utility rates, uh, there, we're told how much we'll pay for our utilities. Uh, but this is pretty standard that we go ahead and authorize Charles to pay utility bills.
Let's just pay the monthly utilities.
Right.
Is that, do we pay utilities for this office right now, is that what we're?
Not right now, we pay the electric bill, that's all that we're required to pay right now. Vote.
I couldn't hear what you said.
The electric bill is the only bill that we are paying for the building, I have to go back and look at the contract.
That's it, I paid the water.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you. Right now, we don't have a lot of utility bills.
I'll make a motion that we uh, approve resolution two oh two-three dash three.
Tom, do we have a second?
I second it.
Chad? Roll call vote please.
Okay, um, here's a roll call vote to approve resolution two zero two-three dash three, authorizing the payment of regular periodic utility bills. Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries to approve the resolution on payment of regular utility billings.
Okay, thank you. Item number ten, discussion consideration and possible action to approve a professional services agreement with RS Meacham CPAs and advisors. We're gonna call in Tracy Reed, she does um, some contracts with a number of cities, I think twelve or thirteen, to provide their municipal accounting setup, lodging tax collection. And so Helen's gonna dial her in and she, do you have her, yeah, here's the.
All of her information, clear.
Yeah, all her information is here, what's not on this is the information regarding the lodging tax collection.
Hi, Tracy, it's Helen Harden at Ho Chi Town. Well, we're at a place in our meeting where we'd like to dial you in and discuss your um, okay, here we go, I'll put you on speaker. Oh, and I just wanted to let you know that this meeting is being recorded, so is that okay with you? Okay, all right, here we go. Okay, Tracy?
Yes.
Tracy, I have Diane Jordan, our mayor, and our board of trustees.
Hi, Tracy.
Hi, Tracy. Um, are we, so um, do you all have the documents that I sent in front of you?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so uh, let's see, grab those, I thought I grabbed them on shoulder. So um, really what I thought you all wanted to see was a big picture kind of on down the road, what I found has worked well, um, for uh, towns across Oklahoma. Now, I realize that these things, we're kinda jumping ahead in the fact that you all aren't really ready for any of that yet. But big picture, as you look down the road, um, those are the kind of documents that um, I have found the health councils, that they are making decisions, financial decisions for their town. So um, just kinda a big picture, do you'd like for me to go over that as we look down the road? And then, um, let's talk about real specifically, like the hottest fire burning, what we need to do and uh, what, what the, the next steps might be. So, just uh, so if you all have the one in front of you, uh, that has the uh, letterhead, um, with the RS Meacham name at the top and it has a bunch of words, um, uh, on the, the front copy, that's just the compilation letter that we are required uh, to have each time.
Tracy, we have three documents with letterhead, can you tell us specifically which one you're talking about?
Let's see, it is going to say, to the city commission, city of where we're at, Oklahoma.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry about that, I forgot. Yes, so that one, that first page, that's all the legal mumbo jumbo we do every time, but basically, the babies aren't all, that's basically what it says. But you can read through that and fall asleep very easily. But that page, so that's just the cover letter that we have to have with it. But page number one, beyond that, is an example of um, a schedule of cash. Now, for you all, currently, you're just gonna have one fund, they happen to have, you know, several funds, which are divided out, cash available and by the unrestricted cash is at the top, so that's the cash they can spend for anything that is needed. And then restricted cash at the bottom, again, divided by funds, so that they have a, an understanding of where those cash balances sit at the end of the month, those are reconciled. Um, and so they can then make those decisions based on uh, what that cash uh, looks like at that time. Uh, so the second page on that document is really that cash graph. And I'll tell you, most um, councils find the graph here to be um, a real quick glance, where's our cash going? Where has it been in the last thirteen months? Are we going up or are we going down? Again, that's just the unrestricted. Uh, but that's usually a document that um, is helpful in, again, kinda big picture of where to restand uh, with our, our cash balances. And then page three of that document uh, serves our general fund. And so you'll see there, you're looking at your revenues at the top, and we're comparing them to budgets. Because if we have a good working budget, to understand kind of uh, where we are at the end of that month compared to where we thought we would be helps to guide decisions. So if we adopt a, a budget that uh, we are expecting to bring in more money this year than we expect to spend, if that's not the case, we need to be aware of that and where that, where that might land us at the end of the year, and therefore what decisions we might make today based on that information. But you can see, it's all divided by department, of course, they have several departments, I realize at this point you all don't, but you may in the future have a police, a fire, a library, a parks, et cetera. Uh, but then showing what those revenues are compared to those expenses in each of those departments, to come down to big picture, did we make money or lose money uh, through the end of this timeframe that we're looking at there? And then the last document that I, I have included is there for them, it's their sales and lease tax, and it's comparing it to the prior year to see how they're doing. Now, for you all, lodging tax is gonna be huge for you all, uh, to have a graph for your lodging taxes is probably going to be uh, a helpful piece of information for you all. It's that, it'll likely go, it's going to be a, your strongest revenue driver. So, that kind of, that's kind of long term, you start looking at what kind of financials might you want to be seeing at your monthly meeting. Something like that is what most councils find to be most helpful. Now, QuickBooks has um, some reports, these of course, they're, they're uh, the source document is QuickBooks. But this summarizes it, most of the time, the reports from QuickBooks were many times, uh, it could be uh, more information than a council can digest uh, in a short timeframe. But if, if council doesn't want to have anything uh, you know, uh, specialized like this, uh, certainly the uh, reports from QuickBooks would be something we could look at and see if we could get it in a format that might be useful. So, that's the, the, on a monthly basis, or some, some places it's quarterly, it kinda, it really depends on what uh, what council finds to be the most needed, helpful. But that's just from a financial reporting perspective on giving a, where are we here today type of report, those are the reports that uh, most councils find to be helpful. So, any questions on that particular, uh, those documents, again, they're just examples, but any questions on those or uh, any comments?
Tracy, I was um, wondering if you might uh, just explain the difference.
Tracy, this is Charles Ward, our treasurer, speaking.
Hi, Charles.
How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, um, yeah, I was wondering if you might uh, tell us really the difference between uh, the um, budget basis and uh, other accounting principles?
Yeah, so, just so you all know, so the budget basis of accounting is not officially uh, recognized basis of accounting. Uh, as a government, we'll fall under governmental accounting standards, uh, which happens at the end of the year when we do reporting loosely. Uh, speaking, budget basis pretty much equals cash, not always, because depending on uh, you uh, use the accounts payable function in QuickBooks, that's not going to always be the case, you could very well enter the bills in one month, you'll pay them in the next. But it loosely resembles cash. What that really means is, if anybody's familiar with uh, financial statements, in a balance sheet, typically during the year, the only movement in the balance sheet um, is your cash. Now, if you use the accounts payable function, that of course will do. But all of that to say, uh, under financial uh, reporting, let's say you buy a big asset, so for you all, let's say you buy a truck. If you were uh, familiar with uh, for-profit accounting, that truck then sits on the balance sheet, it's now an asset. In uh, under the budget basis, that cash out for that truck's gonna sit here on those financial statements, that's the uh, income statement during the year. Now, at the end of the year, it gets pulled back uh, onto the balance sheet. So, instead of having those assets uh, reflected on the balance sheet during the year, they're reflected on your statement of revenues and expenses, showing that cash out. So, cash is the, the closest um, the closest description of what that really is, does that answer your question?
Uh, I believe so, the, the, I mean, the other official accounting method is just what the.
Well, so there's two big accounting bodies, uh, so the Financial Accounting Standards Board, or FASD, does all of the for-profits. So, if you run a for-profit business, you're gonna fall under uh, FASD. Governmental has their own, called Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or CASD. And so uh, the governmental falls under that, now you'll notice, like in these financials, one of the big pic, one of the objectives of governmental accounting is basically, how much should the cost us that in police department, how much does it cost us to run our water department, how much should it cost us? And so, the um, the, the big picture is, you end up with all of these departments. And and if you look at any um, auto reports for uh, governmental, they have several schedules in there that are trying to convey that same uh, that same uh, answer, how much does it cost to run whatever department? And so, all of those revenues and those expenses are categorized by department. Um, and then looked at as, and, and really what happens is, you have all these general fund revenues, so sales, use, lodging tax, and then you use it to fund, oh, that's how we have our police, that's how we have our library, that's how we have our parks, et cetera. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, it, it um, yeah, it, it's um, yeah, I, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
One of the things I might interject here is, I believe it is in May, possibly in McAllister, which is not as far as Oklahoma City, that the uh, Oklahoma municipal, we will be having treasurers and clerks training. And so, it would be great for anybody that wants to understand the process to, to attend that.
Yes, and those tend to be very valuable, valuable workshops, especially if you're new. Uh, then, you know, they help you stay in, uh, to have an understanding of what those uh, compliance matters are uh, with state statutes and um, budgeting and filing of reports, et cetera. So, yes, that, that is a very useful uh, training. I have not personally been, uh, I have other, many other close to treasurers who have been and found it to be very useful. So, based on their feedback, I would encourage that if anybody has a chance to go.
Yeah.
Tracy, can we move to the lodging tax, that's really what I think we're interested in today. Um, like I said, we just approved our claims and we have one. So, you know, we're just not quite ready to get into the accounting pieces?
Right, right, yes.
So, can we talk about lodging?
Give you one quick heads up though, um, your budgets are going to be due, uh, if you, if you're going to fall under the municipal budget act, uh, the council needs to see a first look at your budget uh, by, by the end of May, so May thirty-first, thirty days before the end of your fiscal year. And then it has to be a public hearing and adopted, uh, public hearing before June fifteenth, adopted by June twenty-third. So, and I know you all are all brand new and we really don't have any activity yet, uh, but I believe, my understanding is you will still fall under that and need to have some kind of budget, now it could be very basic this time, we don't really know, we have no history, we don't know what your revenues or your expenses are gonna be, but something to file with the state in order to be in compliance. So, that's, you know, coming up pretty quickly too, but I, I agree with you, lodging tax is your most urgent issue at this point.
Okay, those are great dates to know, so we'll get those on our calendar, absolutely, get those made in set. Get those made you set.
Perfect, yes, okay. So can, explain to me, where, where have we been so far with the lodging tax? What have we done? What discussions have we had? Uh, what direction are we thinking with regards to collections and, uh, getting all of those in place?
Well, I mean, we can go with the Oklahoma Tax Commission to collect, but I think that, you know, we want to be a town that collects our own so we can keep track of it. And it was my understanding from Liz that you are doing that for several cities.
We are. Let me ask you this. How many, um, do we have any idea how many, uh, we are talking about as far as, uh, it will be remitting to us?
We wish we knew. I mean, I would say...
Between a thousand and fifteen hundred.
That's what I'm going to say. A thousand and fifteen hundred. Uh, we have a lot of property managers that'll be turning in the remittance for, you know, twenty cabins, a hundred cabins, two hundred cabins. And then we'll have the Verbo and Airbnb single operators. And then we'll have the people that just do it themselves here. So we kind of have like four major categories of payers.
And have we, um, have we talked, uh, have we tried to get anything in place with, uh, Verbo, Airbnb, uh, property managers, et cetera?
Well, we need to know when we want to start collection. Um, you know, if we want to try to get this done by May first or May fifteenth or June first.
I think with VRBO, then we're going to have to zip code to give them right before they will.
Yeah. I don't think that's right. I think, I think they can, um, carve it out for us.
Okay.
It may not be right, but, um, talked to the zip code people today, so we're still working, but...
So from a legal perspective, uh, do we know, I mean, can we collect? I mean, can we start that as early as they want? Or is there a, uh, timeframe which we have to give them X days' notice?
No, only for the state collection, they have to have thirty days' notice. Now, and we can certainly say, you know, um, it was passed with, um, what's our word? Emergency clause? So we can make it effective immediately, but obviously nobody's going to jail for not paying it the first day as, as we get it set up.
Yeah, uh, did we just, did we pass that today or?
It was passed.
It, well, yeah, we've already passed...
April fourth.
April, yeah, we passed it April fourth.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um, yes, so, uh, most definitely then. Have we, have, have we contacted, uh, VRBO, Airbnb or anything?
No, we were waiting to talk to you about what the best collection process will be.
Yeah, so here's where, and we need to, have you all talked to the Oklahoma Tax Commission about, uh, about that? I know you said you wanted to do that because you don't feel like there's going to be, uh, the transparency with the Oklahoma Tax Commission, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, that may be one. And the second one is that we can't start until July first if they collect it and they charge a, a fee for that. And we can start immediately if we do it ourselves.
Well, and I don't know what, so...
We wouldn't see a, we wouldn't see any...
Hey, hey, Tracy? Tracy, can you hang on one minute?
Yeah, I think we wouldn't see any revenue if we went with the tax commission until probably late third quarter, something like that, right?
Okay, and that is true. They do have some processes in place that takes time to implement. So, yes, so here's, um, here's my only, uh, we'll have to look into this because I don't know this answer, uh, offhand. So, okay, big picture on municipal finance. Every state in the union, and I mean every state, forty-nine states except for the state of Oklahoma. Um, they have the ability that some of your property taxes go to your municipalities. That is not the case in the state of Oklahoma. So like that, um, usually lodging tax is implemented by a state and not only municipality. Uh, so here's where we could run into problems with Airbnb and VRBO is that they are used to remitting to the state, not to municipalities. So, uh, we would need to look into that and see, uh, what kind of reporting, uh, that they can give us. Because obviously, we need to be able to, um, make sure that cabin number one, you know, has paid, cabin number two has paid, et cetera. Uh, and if, and making sure that they will remit to us, make sure they understand the law that it says that yes, it would go to us, not to the state. Um, could be, has, has anybody, uh, has anybody addressed that or, uh, you know, considered that?
No, again, we were waiting to see what you said about collecting lodging tax.
Yeah, so that we would need to check on. I, I, I could be, I mean, maybe they're set up in such a way that they can quickly, you know, remit that to us with no problem. But it doesn't have to be, um, through the, the state. Um, but, and, and then on capturing, uh, so if that's the case, yes, getting that report, you know, directly from them and getting that, um, that remittance directly to us, it would be perfect. And then obviously, you all know what property managers are around there. And I guess, um, identifying those individual property owners by property records, uh, is the next, which I assume, do, are, are, is there anybody? Or I'm sure this happens, but how often do you think it happens that individual owners rent without going through, uh, like an Airbnb?
Twenty percent? What do you guys think? Ten? Fifteen?
Would you guess?
Do you manage any management company or...
Individuals.
Self-managed.
Self-managed and management companies.
Yeah.
I mean, so...
I doubt very few do it.
Right.
I don't know, very, very few.
Individuals have a lot to have a source.
Yeah.
Okay, well, good. I, I think that one's going to, those are going to be the harder ones to enforce collection or have a, you know. It, their records may not be adequate, uh, to be able to review in a way to determine, you know, did they remit the amount of, uh, taxes that we, we know that they, uh, should have? But it sounds like it's going to be a very small, small, uh, portion. So here's really, I mean, uh, here's what I think we have to do then. Uh, uh, I think we have to, uh, give notice. And I think the first thing is then we've got to contact, uh, VRBO, Airbnb and see if they will remit directly to us and what steps we have to take to make that happen. Um, because it sounds like that's going to be, I think for your property managers, I assume they're local. And so they're easy to capture.
I'm thinking we need a little subcommittee on lodging tax.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that last comment. What was that?
There's, there's, you've got, um, you've got probably, um, say, um, I wouldn't say half, but I would say you've got a lot of, a lot of individuals that are not local.
Right. Yeah, it's a big number.
A lot of property managers who are not local, that type?
Right.
Cabin owners and property managers.
Okay, so if they're professional property managers, I would anticipate that, yeah, they're going to have systems in place to ensure that those taxes get, uh, collected in a timely, on a timely basis. So, um, you know, I think though, between if we can get VRBO, Airbnb to remit directly to us, I think we're not going to have any, any problems, uh, getting, um, getting the property managers to, to do that. Um, and then the individuals, uh, sounds like that's a small, small portion. So that's what I think the first thing we have to do is, uh, make sure that they will remit directly to us. And that may be, uh, getting, um, the, the attorneys involved possibly in order to, uh, it may be, uh, and they may need to have validation that, you know, this is legal in the state of Oklahoma, et cetera. Uh, you'd think that what you all passed would do, but I'm not, I'm not sure if that would. So I think that's our, our, the very first thing we have to do. I think a corporation like that, the timing of getting that done might take a little bit of time, is my guess. So that would be our, our very first step, I would recommend, to go ahead and move forward with that.
Um, quick question. I mean, just ballpark, I know there's a lot of variables and you can't give me an exact timeline. But say you guys start, we've got this, the lodging tax passed and you guys start, say, try to start collecting it the first of next month. I mean, how, how long would that typically take for you guys to actually start collecting the money?
Well, are you suggesting that they would, I mean, that we would be collecting for you or you all would be collecting and we would be then assisting, uh, in making sure that the accounting of all of that is taken care of?
Our understanding from Liz is that you would do the collecting.
Yes.
If that's, if that's not the case, we need to probably just revisit this.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so they would, so the collections would come basically, uh, to us. We would then, um, make sure all of that was accounted for and then remitted to you all.
Okay, so you guys don't actually do the collecting?
We, we don't typically, no.
Okay.
No, not typically. Uh, because most of the time, honestly, um, you know, they are remitted directly to City Hall. And then there's an accounting board at City Hall. Um, and we have one community, uh, that is moving away from them doing the, the collections. And they are, um, having the Oklahoma Tax Commission do that, but they're just in the process now switching that over. We wouldn't, we don't typically do those, I mean, uh, collections or anything like that. Now, the accounting on the backside is making sure, you know, cabin number one pays, cabin number two, if we have questions about that, to go in and do an audit. You know, um, identify those that haven't paid, collection letters go out, that kind of stuff. Yes, but typically your remittance would go directly to City Hall. Is how that would typically work. Unless you use the Oklahoma Tax Mission, which I do understand what you're saying, the timing of the tax mission is such that, yes, it, it will take some time. So I'm not saying that we can't, but I, I, tell me the situation right now at City Hall. Completely volunteer? Do we have anyone there? You know, what's our, what's our...
We're completely volunteer because we don't have lodging tax collections.
That's right.
We have a chicken and egg situation.
Is, I'm sorry, recap. What did you say?
We have a chicken and egg situation because we're all volunteers because we have no tax being collected to pay somebody.
Right, right, yes. And so, yes, you have to get those taxes collected in order you can even do more of anything. So, uh, that's why we're all volunteer, correct?
Yes.
And do we have someone who is willing and able, uh, to spend that time at City Hall to, uh, have those, uh, collections come in and, uh, make sure those get accounted for?
Well, I think Charles has been doing that, but we, again, we need to see what the workload is before we go to professional help, so...
Yeah, because if you think there's a lot of fifteen hundred within your corporate boundaries, that's a lot. I mean, that, that is going to be a lot, uh, to, to manage and to make sure, you know, obviously, those get, uh, that, that the accounting for that is, uh, accurate and timely, um, on that. Um, so you, I mean, that's for sure going to be, you know, someone in the office probably more than volunteer like Dean wants to.
Tracy, just to, um, just to kind of recap, um, you don't currently collect lodging taxes for anybody in the city, is that right?
No, our city's, uh, have a lodging tax that is, uh, remitted to the city. Now, we help them manage that and help them make sure that, you know, the whole thing pays, et cetera, would send out letters, that kind of stuff.
Well, can you guys, can you guys just get together then and kind of, uh, figure out if that is something your firm wants to do? And then if so, get back with us and, uh, maybe give us an idea of what fees you would have for that?
Okay, yeah, I, yes, let me, let me see, um, with, and see if that's even something that we, we would be able to even move forward with. Certainly, we're happy to give, uh, you know, if, if it isn't, what other solutions we might, uh, we might recommend.
Okay.
With that, but yes, I agree with you, timing is at the essence, that needs to be done ASAP, for sure.
Tracy, this is Howard Haggard. I talked to you the other day.
Oh, yeah, hi, Howard.
How you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Question I've got. Can you, you say your current, your firm does not collect taxes and then send it to the municipalities? I understand that.
That is correct.
But you say you do, you are furnishing a service to them as far as, is accounting for the money once it is sent to the, to the municipality or to City Hall?
That is correct.
Can you furnish us a list of those towns? Or, or just, uh, just two or three of them that we can kind of look at them and maybe contact them and see how it's working after them?
Well, you know what, it occurs to me, um, the town that I can think of that I think most, what might, what most closely resemble what you all are doing right now is the city of Grove. They have, and I don't remember the timing, but it hasn't been too long, I don't believe, that they've had their lodging tax. Of course, they're right there on Grand Lake. And, uh, and I know this just because my parents live up at Grand Lake and they have friends who have, uh, in certain instances, uh, used, uh, VRBO, Airbnb, et cetera, to rent out their houses when they're not there and, uh, have been remitting, you know, then lodging tax, of course, gets remitted to the city. They might really be a good resource of what they have found out. It's obviously, it's a larger city. They are going to have a more robust accounting system than you all would need. They probably have one of the big custom ones that was made for governmental accounting. But they might be able to provide some insight into, okay, as you all started collecting this, what did you find to be your most effective and efficient way to, uh, manage that? Because while the corporate boundaries obviously don't go across, you know, the entire lake. Um, it's, it's enough that I'd say it would give some, uh, insight as to what they have found to be, uh, helpful in this situation.
Okay.
Uh, and, and, you know, that, that's a, I think, a good place to pick up the phone and, you know, just ask.
Okay, yeah.
I'd be happy to do that for you or you all. Jump in and, and do that and see, you know, what answers that they might be able to provide. Uh, if, I mean, I think that they are, uh, they're going, they have, uh, navigated these waters before. Uh, it might be able to provide us some, some insight there.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, at this point, where, where would you like to, uh, what would be the next action steps that you would like me to be involved in?
I think we should take a break.
Yeah.
Let us regroup and talk to some of our collecting managers and see what they think. Yeah, and then we can get back with you on what we think we, how we might to make this work.
Perfect, yeah. And then, yeah, let me know if you, if you think that there, I mean, I'll, I'll certainly talk, uh, to the, the boss and see what he thinks about, you know, our capacity to be helpful, uh, in this situation or if you have another recommendation. If we don't believe that we're best fit for this specific, um, situation, that maybe that there would be something, you know, another idea that might, um, help you all navigate this, uh, successfully and efficiently.
Very good.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for talking with us today, Tracy.
You are welcome. And then, yeah, just, just let me know if there's anything you think would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good day.
Bye. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Bye.
It's obvious too.
So, talk?
It's obvious that they're not really what we was, maybe for our accounting purposes, but what we're needing now, they're not.
Well, Liz, I don't know, I'm assuming Liz preferred these guys to them.
Right, right.
Well, obviously, they didn't, um, find out exactly what their services is.
Patty that we talked to.
Yes, she was just the upper.
No. No, well, she, she was CPA, did audits, and I can't recall, she collected, um, uh, taxes, lodging taxes, anything before. But that's something I can, uh, we can visit, we can learn about more. But she, she seemed to me to be a very, you know, capable, highly qualified accountant that might, you know, get it over with. Her name is, is Patty Ross?
She's from, uh...
She's from Oklahoma City, yeah, yeah. Uh, and she has, has done, um, municipalities for, I think she said, I've learned about offices.
So is this collection that we were attempting to, to have these, uh, you know, this company do for us, would, is that, is that a stretch? Of course, these type of firms...
I think it is. I really think it's, it's not something that a, a typical accounting firm would kind of do at all.
I think we should talk to Oklahoma Municipal Lee. We can call Daniel and see what some other towns are doing.
Yeah, right.
And especially if you guys go to the treasurer's meeting. We can get some names ahead of that time from, from Daniel. We don't want to wait till May. But, I mean, do we want to have a little committee of cabin operators and collectors to figure this out? Or like, do you guys want to do it to start with? What do you think?
And I guess my question is, so we're going out here a month and we still haven't found anyone to do this. At that point, do we just let the state handle it? Because we'd only be...
Well, so here's an option is we can look at the, the timing of it, um, and not start until July first. But we have to give them, I think, seventy-five days' notice, notice to do that. So we need to, uh, what?
The tax commission.
Tax commission. So, um, you know, we have to look at the calendar. I know that's getting close.
We give them seventy-five days' notice and then they have to give thirty days' notice to the payers.
Right, so, I mean...
That would be an option.
Again, July first will be here before we know it. That's certainly an option.
Right.
Um, the other option is to ask people to start and... Um, the other option is to ask people to start and mail in their checks.
We're, we're almost in seventy-five days.
Yeah, that's what I said, we're really close.
We're like, next week, we would have to.
I think.
My concern is that, um, three hundred people out there making checks to Charles, and, and that flood of that mail coming in and, and that accountability, and we're still volunteers.
Well, it would make sense to use a P O box for, for safety.
What, true.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, the, the accounting firms, you'll notice, they won't, uh, they won't take those checks and deposit for us, it's still up to us. Get the checks, deposit them, we have to, uh, put them all into our, our system, and all they do really is just kind of review it, you know? Review it and make sure we put all the categories in the right places and everything else, and then they print out the forms, something quick, but it's like that.
Paying them, uh, look over our shoulder, I guess, you know, and I know that has to be done, I mean, we have to do that, to make sure we're doing this right and get audit stuff.
Right. It needs to be done.
It, since we're approaching that seventy-five days, it seems to me that whoever we do choose to do this, whether it's an outside group or the state, it's gonna take time to actually collect who you're, who you're gonna be getting it from, and I don't see that getting done.
I don't think that'll take that long, because, uh, I mean, David Francis at the Oklahoma Tax Commission, I mean, we've been working on this for months and months, um, with ideas of how to do this, and so he can take the boundary map of Ho Chi Town, which he already has, and he can populate all those addresses that are required to, yes, that are required to pay the taxes, I mean, we can do the same thing, but so can they. So, I mean, punch a button and it should spit out letters.
If, if we're coming up on that seventy-five days, can we go ahead and give notice to the state to do it and then just withdraw that if we find a?
That's absolutely an option.
You know, also.
I would think that would be, as a fair say, a plan B, we go ahead and get, beat the seventy-five day marker, and then if we can make it happen before then, then we can all withdraw.
Okay.
That's gonna be our long-term, you know, solution anyways, as we move forward.
Well, as I said, ultimately, we want O T C to do it anyway, yeah, yeah.
In my opinion, whether, whether you pay the Oklahoma Tax Commission or whether you pay some other people, you're, you're still gonna pay somebody to collect it for you.
Right.
That's right. So.
Right.
The difference with the Oklahoma Tax Commission is they lump it all in and send it to the, you know, by ZipCo or by the plus four that they'll use just for Ho Chi Town. Um, and they don't do any audit on any of it. You know, and if we do it at the local level, it can be audited, so that may be something that we want to think about.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, but moving forward is the most important part.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, so if we mess around and, or things happen and we don't get in that seventy-five day window, we gotta wait till the next quarter.
The next quarter, right.
So we want to definitely be.
So how can we make that application, like, within the next week?
Yeah, it needs to be done.
Right, okay, so, do we want to?
Got a minute, one minute, please?
Yeah.
Is it seventy-five days or is it one hundred and five days? You have seventy-five days to know if O T C, they have thirty-five, thirty days to know if I call.
Within that seventy-five days, then it's their thirty days.
You two can overlap each other, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we want to take no action on this? Certainly, no action on the contract with Meacham?
As far as, as far as Meacham.
Yeah, no action on contract, I'm making a motion to take no action.
Okay. Okay, so, motion by Todd to take no action?
I'll second it.
Second by Chad.
Okay, um, roll call vote to take no action on the, uh, agreement with Meacham CPAs and advisors, Janet Press?
Yes.
Howard Haggard?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries to take no action on Meacham.
Item number eleven, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve the engagement of engineering services for purposes of wastewater management.
I will, I'll just say that the, uh, we've started some discussions with the tribe as far as they, maybe being able to use their waste treatment facility, their building. There is some difference in opinion amongst the tribe, whether we can do that or not. I think what it boils down to is whether the chief says, do it, make it happen or not. Uh, we've got to give them some information, and that is basically what the flow is gonna be through this main corridor, and how much they would be treating, how much, how much water they would actually be treating wastewater. And they gave us the number to an engineer to call, uh, basically said that he would be, uh, he's relatively cheap and would help us get these numbers and design what we needed through this corridor to connect to them, uh.
You know what company that was?
I got the, I got his name.
And he's already done the initial plan five years ago, so.
Yes, and, and he does, and he, and he does a lot of the tribe's engineering, so he's familiar with what they need and everything.
The stretch.
Uh, his name is Cody Hopkum, and so if we decide to today, I'd like to call him and get the ball rolling on, on what we need to do to be able to basically get the CHOPTAS the information they need so they can say yes or no to the, to the possibility. Then at least we know what our next step is, whether it's gonna be connecting to them for a short term or a long term. I would guess anything we do with them would be short term, considering in fact they've got eight hundred more acres that they want to develop, and they would be using that waste treatment for all of their expansion, and then when you consider any expansion, Ho Chi Town may be doing, uh, they've got point nine five is their permit, which is ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty thousand gallons, I guess.
Yeah.
And they believe that they're.
Nine hundred and fifty per day, or what is that?
I believe it's a day. I'm not sure what the timeline is on it, that's just how they do the permitting, and I know that, right, they expect the resort as it is to use up point six. Now, that was their engineer saying, or the guy with the construction of it, but when we talked to their environmental guy, he said that it wouldn't use that much, that they're just.
One fourth.
Yeah, he said there should be room there for us to tie in and use it for a temporary fix, or at least a temporary solution until we can come up with a plan or the funding to build our own waste treatment or another option, there's some other options that are out there. Which we have.
You know, I'll be telling Diane about the comprehensive engineering services, David Smith and Ra, Raou, Ronald Ortiz, and I know they're doing some work for the CHOPTAS. I'm wondering if that's the same.
It may be the same.
It may be the same group, this particular guy has already mapped out.
I bet it is.
The two fifty-nine.
Could be, yeah.
And, and, and so I guess today we just need to decide whether to call him and start this process and be kind of what the point is, is just to kick it off.
Look into it, look into it, for sure.
And, and get it going, get them the information they need, which I think most of it we can get from rural water, because it's basically whatever amount of water they're using through here, that's what it'll be doing, and then we'd have to give them a couple of, uh, industrial type, some information on that as far as the, the brewery and the distillery, because they're considered a manufacturer, and that's looked at a little differently, so we'd have to get them what would actually be getting put into the water by those places.
I'm assuming we're, they're working with ODOT, you know, the construction of the highway, sewer, right of ways, the four and nine yards.
All of that goes together.
And that's another reason why this particular guy would be, I think, helpful, is because of his close relation with the tribe and ODOT, and they're all working together. And we definitely want to coincide anything we do with the road work, because we don't want to disrupt it twice.
Yeah.
And so, uh, so I guess today, I guess what, what this, what we're basically asking is, can we engage this guy and get the ball rolling?
Well, you know, I've been dealing with a few, um, community members, Rusty was one of them, me and Rusty had a good talk two, three weeks ago, talking about, you know, the potential possibility of being able to find out if the construction of, of, you know, the new thoroughfare could potentially be, um, a time where we start building the infrastructure for that line, even if it's something that is not utilized immediately, that is done maybe at the same time.
We talked about that exactly, yeah, that's exactly what we said.
Yeah. We had talked about, yeah.
And, and that's a goal, I mean, that's, that's definitely option number one, is to be able to coincide with that, so we can be put in when they got the road tore up, and we're not coming back after the fact and trying to do it, so that's, that's kind of why. And the tribe also is in, they're close with ODOT as far as working with what's going on through here, so those relationships are tight-knit and there's a lot of communication there. So that's why we're recommending this guy for that reason. And, and it's not a long-term hire or nothing, it's just a short term, hopefully, it won't cost us very much, uh, a couple thousand dollars or something just to get the information we need to get to the tribe, and then, and then we can decide on actually getting engineers and.
Well, it's a good consultation to give us a vision of potentially what we could be looking at.
And I think the, the consultation with this guy is, since he already did it five years ago, he's probably the quickest guy with the most amount of information, because what we don't want to do is get behind to where, even if we could do this, but ODOT's already moved ahead, they've already plowed up the road and started concrete, and here we are behind, so we do feel like he can do this fairly quickly to get the new information and update his plan. I make a motion, we approve the engagement of the engineering services for purpose of water waste management.
I second it.
Janet made the motion, seconded by Todd, do we have a roll call vote?
Um, roll call vote to approve the engagement of engineering services for purpose of wastewater management, Jeanne Kress?
Yes.
Howard Haggard?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries to approve the engagement of engineering services for wastewater management.
And, and just to be clear, that this doesn't, this mean that Cody Hopkum, by, only, because I would like to get with David White, the R D D, because he's, I know he's done engineering up and down this corridor as well, that may be very beneficial to what we need to know. So that, uh, I hope everyone understands that this is just engagement of any, any engineering that we need to work on this, get this done.
Absolutely.
Good work, Todd, you're gonna call him?
Yeah.
He was doing that, okay. Todd's gonna take the lead on that, did a good job the other day. Okay, item number twelve, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of the posting of the agenda? Does anybody have anything new to add? Hearing none? Okay, do we have a discussion of possible action to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn, second it.
Motion by Todd, seconded by Chad, roll call vote to adjourn.
Okay, roll call vote to adjourn the meeting, Janet Kress?
Yes.
Howard Haggard?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at two oh three P M.
Thank you, everybody.